Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Hornbuckle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Hurt is absent. Excuse Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Present.
President McDermott.
Here.
Acquorum is present.
All right. We will now begin tonight's meeting with a special announcement and presentation. We have two of them. Leading us off is going to be Miriam Katie, and she is going to be talking about the very exciting Pizza Palooza fundraiser that is coming up.
Arthur, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you again for, of course, once again approving to waive the fees and everything for our event. It really means a lot to us. It's about our Pizza Palooza. I can't believe it's already kicking off our 2025 year with our big fundraiser that does that. So people really love this one. It's a Pizza Palooza and Quarter Auction. So if you haven't done the Quarter Auction, it's really too hard and too confusing to explain. You need to be there, and anybody that's done it knows that. But it's so much fun. We just really, we're busting at the seams, which is great. Kyle, Parks and Rec, everybody's been great about trying to figure out how we're going to fit everybody, and it works. So we're thankful to have it at City Hall again. So it is November 12th. It's a Tuesday from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it's $10 for adults and children seven and under $5. And all of the proceeds go to the Relay for Life. If you know someone personally that's on the team, or, you know, a team, or, you know, anybody, you can name them when you come in. If not, it all goes to our relay anyway. So either way, and then so you get to taste all these. We're trying to get at least 12 vendors. Get to try all these different pizzas, and you get to vote on the best pizza that night. So it's just a lot of fun. And it also helps support, you know, a lot of the local pizzas, pizza places. And we're actually, since we have opened it up to other areas, as, you know, change our name to Relay for Life Westland, Western Wayne County, it's really helped out because there are so many relays surrounding us that just, or so many communities that just don't have their relays anymore. They're not able to. So we thought we'd invite them, and we're having a really good response from that. So we'll have pizza places from all over. So we would love to have you. Our website, just in case you want to look anything up about us, because it did launch our new website. So it's relayforlife.org/westlandwayne MI. And once again, my name is Miriam. I'm part of the lead team, and we have an amazing lead team that I'm very blessed to be a part of. And thank you so much for the mayor, the city council, fire police, Parks and Rec, WLND, I mean, state administration. We just thank you for helping out so much. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Miriam. Appreciate it. We will now have our second special announcement and presentation from our clerk's office, and our clerk.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. If you're a Westland voter, you may not have heard, but there is an election coming up. And I'd like to talk about three different ways that you can vote during the November 2024 election. One, many of you have already received your absentee ballots through the mail. In fact, about 17,000 voters have received a ballot. We don't have them all back yet. In fact, we're at about half right now. But you can vote absentee through essentially the day before the election. Election eve, 4 o'clock p.m., come into the office, we'll hand you a ballot. You can vote it right there. Or you can call our office at 467-3185, and we'll tell you what you need to do in order for us to mail you an absentee ballot. That's one way. Secondly, of course, you can show up on election day at your precinct, and you can vote from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you're in line at 8:00 p.m., you still get to vote. So if there's a line, don't let that dissuade you. Stay in line. Somebody from our team will be by to hand you a slip of paper that ensures you still get to vote. The latest way of voting, however, begins this coming weekend, early voting. Early voting is a state constitutional mandate. Westland is a part of that mandate. We will once again be hosting early voting here at Westland City Hall in the Ballroom area beginning Saturday, October 26. October 26 through November 3, early voting in the city of Westland, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Just as at a regular precinct, if you're in line at 4:30 p.m., you will be allowed to vote that day for early voting. But early voting, as I said, from April, from October 26 through November 3 includes two weekends, two Saturdays, two Sundays, maybe a bit unconventional. Westland has done this longer than almost any community in the state. So you may have done that in the past. But we also know that some community is elected to take on that challenge a little bit earlier. Thousands of people have already voted at various places in the state through early voting. So I'm going to encourage you to consider early, excuse me, early voting. Come to Westland City Hall. It's a process that literally is exactly like voting in your precinct. You'll check in, sign your application, we'll hand you a ballot, you complete the ballot, and then you feed it into the tabulator. No votes are counted, no votes are tabulated, nobody knows the vote until after 8:00 p.m. on election evening, when we tally all those and all the other votes. So again, any questions about any of the three ways to vote, please contact our office, 467-3185, and we look forward to you voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for that very important announcement. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Edward Pruitt here. Hey, I want to talk on agenda item New Business 1, which is concerning the zoning ordinance. When I look at the zoning ordinance itself, I'm concerned about two pieces of it. The first piece that I'm concerned with is the reduction in public hearings. I believe that it's very important that we increase the, or at least minimally when it's okay, leave the amount of access the public has alone. So I have a concern that it's going to reduce that based on the bullet point that was there. Number two is bullet point number three on the slide that was presented. On that slide, it says that, paraphrase, that council is pretty much going to remove their own checks and balances authority. That's very concerning to me. Not saying that this administration is going to do anything. We have a good administration who is looking to do the right thing for the people. But what if we at some point get a bad administration, or get a bad administration again? We have to have all the checks and balances in place that are necessary to ensure that the right things are being done, and that it doesn't delay the process to have things rectified. It opens the door potentially to change the scope of the city. And I'm very concerned that council, elected by the people, to do the people's work to ensure that there is the right things being done. There's seven eyes, pairs of eyes, that's able to look at things to ensure that things are going in the right way. The other piece concerning the zoning that I have a concern about, it is not so much of a concern as is the cart being put before the horse. With the zoning, it's highlighting the where things go in the city. How does it relate to the master plan? Is the master plan complete? Do we need to see the master plan so that we can appropriately set the zones? So I think that's so important that we are looking at the full picture and doing it, not with the cart before we have the horse ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak on business agenda? Anyone else on my right? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski. There's support by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
None at this time.
Any changes to the consent calendar?
No.
Okay. Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none. Motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held October 7, 2024. Bid for professional services related to audiovisual infrastructure for the new fire station, number two, building. Administration recommended Crescent Digital in an amount not to exceed $13,155.93, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Bid for professional services related to IT infrastructure for the new fire station, number two, building. Administration recommended Enertron LLC in an amount not to exceed $25,930.46, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Bid for professional services related to security systems for the new fire station. Administration recommends, recommended Actron Integrated Security Systems in an amount not to exceed $32,934.50, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Bid for purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus fill stations for the fire department. Administration recommended West Shore Fire in an amount not to exceed $138,743.90, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of accessibility management software subscription renewal with Civic Plus LLC. The terms shall be for one year, and a total cost not to exceed $6,270.74. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, introduction of ordinance 227A5, an ordinance to repeal the ordinances that require city soil erosion control permitting found at Article 4 Soil Erosion Sedimentation and Land Grading Control, Section 42101120. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Any support?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Wishart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent?
Any dissent.
Hearing and seeing none. Motion passes.
New business. Item one, adoption of the updated zoning ordinance 248, introduced October 7, 2024. This ordinances, ordinance replaces the current zoning ordinance in its entirety pursuant to the process set forth in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and taking effect once the new zoning ordinance is formatted.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. This would be through the chair to Planning Director Ayub. I just wondered if you could give us an approximate date of when we could expect the formatting to be put in place.
Adam Young from the development, from the consulting team who helped the city write this ordinance has stated about one month from its adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Bowman.
To the chair, to the director, can we have some of the answers to some of the questions that the, was brought up by the, you know, to Pruitt, as well as, should I just rattle off the few other questions that I have been given?
I have these two questions written down, so I'd appreciate an opportunity to answer them.
Answer those first, and then I can answer the next ones?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt, for your questions. The first question was related to why is this zoning ordinance being brought forward before the master plan that we're undergoing has been adopted? And previously noted several times before that this zoning ordinance that is on the books currently is about 30 years old. So we've had several master plans since then, so in dire need of a zoning ordinance update. Number two, the MEDC gave us a significant chunk of money, I believe 40 grand, to immediately update our zoning ordinance, and it has been 18 months. So there is a need to adopt it as soon as possible here to become RRC certified. That is the last step of several steps that we've undergone as a city to become certified. And the last item I want to discuss is we are excited for our master plan that we are undertaking right now. We hope to bring it to council sometime in the fall, early fall of next year. We do not want to wait that long to adopt this brand-new zoning ordinance. Between adoption today and next fall, if there's anything from the master plan that we feel is not consistent with the adopted zoning ordinance as we work through it for the next several months, we will obviously bring those matters to you and just make minor revisions to the updated zoning ordinance that we're presenting to you today for adoption. That's on the master plan issue. The second item that Mr. Pruitt had a question on was the removal of public hearings. There is no elimination of public hearings. The city council will have the sole authority to continue approving rezonings, special land uses, PUDs, and land divisions. What is being removed, and I want Adam to step in and talk a little bit more about this from the MEDC and RRC's perspective, from an unbiased perspective, is the site plan review authority for permitted by right uses, not special land uses, but uses that I approve administratively because they're permitted by right. Could you talk a little bit more about the RRC requirement and why we are removing that step from the city council approval, please?
Yeah, the redevelopment-ready communities program from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they have established a list of best practices for zoning, as well as for master plans and other community policies. They also have best practices for the development review process. Their goal is to ensure that communities are ready for development, ready for redevelopment, business-friendly, and really to identify and eliminate regulatory barriers that we have in our zoning ordinance. And let's not make a regulatory barrier a reason to have to say no to a good project, or delay a good project that we want to see in the community. So in that sense, it follows along with their best practice that for site plan review, as Director Ayub had said, not for planned unit development, not for rezoning, not for special land use, which would still come before the city council. But for site plan review, which is for permitted, principal permitted uses within that zoning district. So these are uses that are already deemed to be generally appropriate within that particular zoning district. These are also a site plan that comes before the planning commission. They essentially, state law says that if they meet zoning ordinance requirements, if they meet the setback, if they meet the lot size, things of that nature, that you are required as a community to approve that site plan. So if it meets the site plan review criteria, and it meets the ordinance standards, it's not a non-discretionary decision. So in that sense, it's really set up to say yes or no. If it meets it, if it doesn't, that's your answer right there. It also is something that's seen as more technical in nature. And so the planning commission, which you have a very good one in the city of Westland, and you train them up and make sure that they know how to do their job well, and they have staff that support them and advise them. It's essentially saying that we trust them to be able to make that non-discretionary decision. And of course, eliminating the step of having then to take it, take a site plan to the city council means that you can save time in the development review process. So that's another aspect of the best practice. I did want to mention with regard to the comment about elimination of public hearings. I'll clarify, the planned unit development process in your currently adopted ordinance has two public hearings. That's not a requirement of state law. State law for planned unit development only requires one public hearing, and so consistent with state law. And again, along the lines of trying, seeking to eliminate unnecessary steps. So for, in the case of a planned unit development, the proposal in the, in the draft is to go from two public hearings to one, not no public hearings for a, for a planned unit development. If you have any other questions?
Councilwoman.
I'd be glad to try and answer.
Important to stress that we're not eliminating any public hearings.
Okay. Councilwoman.
Yeah. I will say that one of the, one of the questions that came to me was what they thought that we were eliminating. They said removing the need for two public hearings was also something, someone else read that into this. So I don't know.
So rezonings require a public hearing that will remain. Special land uses require a public hearing that will remain. And planned unit developments require by state law a public hearing that will remain. For some reason, in prior history, our zoning ordinance required two public hearings. And so that is being reduced from two to one. So you will still hear at one public hearing. Generally, in the past, when a PUD has come before you, we have heard both public meetings at the same meeting, both public hearings at the same meeting, if that makes sense.
So the other questions that came to me were a question about reduction in parking. Can that just be clarified, what that is really doing? And then the other one was a new zone for Airbnb-type businesses? That was another question that just came through to the chair.
Sure. Generally speaking, for parking, we are reducing the amount of parking. There's several different uses in the zoning ordinance, and we are generally, I think, between 20% to 40% reducing the amount of parking spaces required. We are also allowing the planning commission and the city council flexibility in the ability to reduce parking spaces as well. Relative to the Airbnb question, I'm not sure what specifically you're asking about.
Creating a new zone for Airbnb-type businesses, and would this apply to people who just want to make an extra few bucks on renting a room, or how to, just to clarify? And again, I just, I want to make sure this gets clarified on record, so that if people are listening to this afterwards, they're getting this.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think Airbnb is called out anywhere in the zoning ordinance.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm trying to respond. Okay. I think, I think that's it right now.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council?
I do have a couple of questions. So number one, it was, you know, kind of touched on, you clarified this as far as what authority is and isn't giving up. I have some, I'm split on both, on the issue of council authority here. I know that we are not giving up authority for special land uses, variances, and things like that. On one end, there have been decisions made in the past where I've disagreed, where, you know, I was one of two folks that voted in dissent because council chose to reject a project. I think we know, you know, marijuana was, was one of those projects. But something like that would still have to come under council purview because it's a special, special land use, and we have its own licensing and ordinance process with that. You know, as far as the check and balance argument, I do have a little bit of consternation and heartburn as far as giving up any authority and control. But I understand that we've gotten ourselves into situations where every little, small thing has to come before council. I mean, a lot split, simple administration, administrative change, you're having to bring before us to vote on basically everything. Is that a fair assessment?
Generally correct, yes. And land divisions, while they don't necessarily need to, will still come to you.
They will still come to council. Okay. So I have a bit of heartburn on that. The other thing that we had talked about when drafting this, too, was increasing green spaces and green access as opposed to, you know, concrete and parking. Can you speak to, you know, how this changes that? I know, obviously, we talked about the reduction in parking spaces, and that's something that we've been working on for a long time with our commercial businesses, that we have, you know, 1960s parking standards in, you know, the 2020s here. But can you talk about how we're, you know, adding and increasing potential green space at some of these zoning requirements?
Yeah, the thought behind the reduction of parking spaces was not only to promote more business activity, because parking lots, as one of our engineers here sitting in the room knows, is very room knows, is very costly. Some of that parking lot area, hard surface area can be used for green space, and I think in some areas, we beefed up our landscaping requirements. I think that touches on both the landscaping and parking elements that you asked for. Happy to provide more detail.
And then as far as, you know, obviously the coming wave of green or zero emissions cars, electric cars, that we're seeing, we can always go back and if we want to add in requirements as far as like, you must have a particular amount of charging stations at a new business development, we can obviously always go back and amend that.
We, in the zoning ordinance, not required, but encouraged people to have E V charging stations in the way that they are able to be counted towards your parking requirement.
And then, just as a point of record for the public as well, even if, you know, we choose to adopt this tonight, this is not something that's set in stone, that can never be amended. There are always the ability of council to go back at a later date, to work with the administration, to work with the public, to make any necessary changes or amendments as well, correct?
There is no doubt in my mind that we will need to make amendments to this.
Right. And so this is a kind of a first draft, work in progress, a first draft, final draft, so to speak. We will look at what's working, what doesn't, what needs to be amended or changed in the future.
We hope it's better than just, just the first draft, but yeah, we will.
Yeah, sure, sure.
We will need, we will need amendments over time, for sure.
And then what, if any, feedback did your office get from, you know, I know we had public hearings over this, and we had this study session, but in between those public hearings, in between the study sessions, what, if any, feedback did your office get from business owners in the community or members of the public residents?
The main thing that comes to mind, Adam, jump in if you want, when I'm done, but the only, the big thing that comes to mind is we had a study session with you, the last one, and there were a variety of things that came out of that, and we sent the emails that I have pulled up here of a variety of different things that we incorporated, like A D Us, the parking regulations. We had heard from Roger, who came on board as a new building official, that there were some mechanical equipment and generator screening requirements that he wanted to see that were not previously in there, so we added those. We also revised some of the language for planning commission members and things like that, just to modernize it. That was a recent ad, and we also held off as long as we could on revising some of the tree ordinance requirements based off some of the stuff that happened in Canton. So those were some of the big things that were done after the final draft was, was ready to go.
And then if you wouldn't mind speaking to it, what neighboring communities of ours are R R C certified communities, and what is the kind of competitive advantage that we would get from a business development or economic, you know, growth standpoint by being an R R C certified community?
Yeah, so it's becoming increasingly common across the state for municipalities and particular cities, I would say, in particular, and then maybe urban townships in metro, the metro area here and elsewhere in the state. The competitive advantage, from the M E D C's perspective, you have resources, you, they also are kind of on your team, so to speak, in that you have free access to them. They have resources that we don't have at the local level, particularly for advertising sites in the community that are maybe primed for redevelopment, that they can even take that on, on your behalf, and advertise it to their contacts that they receive at the state level, and they'll be able to direct, to direct these developers to local communities that have sites that are readily available for them. I would say, you know, those are competitive advantages, they also make financial assistance available to the city, or it enables the city of Westland to at least qualify for certain funding programs through the M E D C. I think it's at the point where so many communities are in this program that you're at a competitive disadvantage if you're not, in my opinion.
Okay.
I can.
Yeah, please.
Do you mind if I name some of the communities?
Yeah, please do, thank you.
Some of the communities that are engaged or certified are Canton Township, Dearborn, Detroit, Farmington, all the Gross Point communities, let's see here, Inkster is engaged, Melvendale, Novi, Northville, Romulus, Van Guren, they have us as, as an engaged community, hopefully with a star next to our name soon as certified. That's kind of generally who's around that is engaged or certified.
And then on the R R C front, I know we've got two kind of big economic development undertakings that we've put into motion years ago with the city center plan and the reimagined Ford Road Plan that our economic development team, your office, has all kind of collaborated on. Do you look at R R C as being a driver towards being able to develop that future city center, downtown type of development that we're looking for?
Yeah, I think R R C can be used as tools to highlight some of the properties in those areas that we want to see redeveloped, but I think a big part of this zoning ordinance rewrite, probably one of the top three benefits of rewriting the zoning ordinance, is that we have created new zoning districts that encompass areas like the mall to try and generate the type of development that these plans have called for. And right now, there's no regulatory tools in place to do that, and now with the zoning ordinance if adopted, we can tell developers, when they come, that this is what we want, and this is how we want it built.
Okay, great, yep, please.
And maybe just to add to that, being engaged or certified in the R R C program also opens up funding opportunities, not just for the city, but for private developers, private property owners. There are specific programs, the Community Revitalization Program is the largest one that I'm aware of, that a property owner can apply directly to the M E D C for funding for a redevelopment project, and it's only enabled to them, that funding source, if the city that they want to develop in is an R R C certified or engaged community.
And then my final question, appreciate that. From a special land use perspective, we've tried to at times, you know, with the Blood Plasma Center being an example of that, we've tried to get ahead of, what is going to be the next wave of business that we may want, you know, a special land use on? Can you speak to how, if at all, these ordinance changes, deal with special land uses, if it's adding any additional, you know, categories into the special land use parameters?
I think the big ones are continuing to be the automotive-oriented businesses. There's going to be two or three massage establishments that come before you, starting next month, that we are classifying as special land uses, so you'll have further examination of those as a city council via the public hearing process. Those are, those are few to name. Do you have any that stand out, Adam, special land uses that have been reclassified?
I would say maybe in general that we did a comprehensive review of every single use that was previously allowed under the current zoning ordinance as a principal permitted use, special land use. It gave us the opportunity to see discrepancies that we had across various zoning districts. We also had a goal to kind of broaden the categories as well, to be more inclusive, and also give some flexibility to the community as well. I think the couple that Mo had mentioned are good examples of ones where previously maybe they were just under principal permitted uses or not even addressed in the zoning ordinance, that now is addressed as a special land use, so you can maintain control over those uses which could be compatible but require some discretion on your part.
Okay. And then, promise my final question, I did, one more popped in, I don't have a million of them. This ordinance, when it comes to residential zoning development, this takes away the, because I know we've done variances since time immemorial about the brick, all the way around, that makes a change to that, does it not?
I don't believe that it does.
It doesn't? Oh, okay. So that is left for council, for planning and council's discretion?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's worked well in the past. I think if there's large-scale development where someone wants to put forty homes in a single neighborhood and they want to develop in a certain style, I think, I think that's okay, but if there's infill development and we want stone or brick or something nicer, then, then I think they have to abide by that.
We've frequently amended that and gone with the, given them a variance, but that's all I have. Is there any additional discussion? Yes, Councilwoman.
So I just, I just want to clarify, because I was hearing an acronym, and I just want to make sure that it's clearly, if I'm understanding this, it's revitalization redevelopment community is what R R C certified? Or did I get that wrong?
Go ahead, take.
Redevelopment Ready Community.
Ready.
R R C.
R R C, okay.
Yes.
Because I heard a couple of different things, just, and I want to make sure that's really clear, so people understand what we're looking at, so if they do a research, a little search on it, they can understand. One last question, and again, I apologize if this is even going on the same thing, but on section three dot three, the very first sentence, and it may, maybe it's to the chair, to the attorney, I don't know, but it's kind of a legalese possibility question, it says, "Land uses which are not contained by name in a zoning district, list of uses permitted by right, comma, special land uses or permitted accessory uses may be permitted upon a finding of the planning commission," which we removed the zoning board of appeals out of that, "that such uses are clearly similar in nature and compatible with the listed uses for that Allowing, so allowing the planning commission, and I'm, I guess I'm reading that if it's not contained by name in a zoning district as a special land use, that the planning committee, commission can now determine that it's okay? I guess I'm, I just want some legalese clarification on that sentence.
This is the use interpretation?
Please.
You could take.
Yeah, so it's meant to prevent or eliminate the need for future amendments to your zoning ordinance, so business owners, property owners are very creative with what they come up with, and they can imagine things that maybe we wouldn't imagine in 2024, that they might want to propose to us in 2026. So what this is doing is provide additional flexibility to the planning commission to be able to look at the list of principal permitted uses, and if somebody wants to propose something that isn't among the list, but the planning commission determines that it's similar to the other principal permitted uses, that they can determine that it is allowed as a principal permitted use. But if it's a special land use, it would have to be deemed, deemed by the planning commission to be similar to other special land uses, and there would be treated just like any other special land use. So they don't have the ability, if it's similar to another special land use, to say, no, it's permitted, we don't have to do a public hearing, it doesn't have to go to council. So that would not be part of this, that's certainly not the intent of this language, and that wouldn't be the effect of it in practice either.
So ultimately, we're putting in, for the planning commission, the ability to put it in the proper category of where it needs to go?
Correct.
Is that what, okay.
Correct.
Thank you, because that was, it was kind of really funny. And just, is there a reason why we took it out of the zoning board of appeals? I can't, I can't remember all that, if there was a specific reason for that.
Yes, the zoning board.
Part of it is, it's not traditionally, the zoning board of appeals is responsible, they're a quasi-judicial entity, so they're really determining whether things deserve modifications from the requirements. It's not really a function of the zoning board of appeals by nature, and it also would add to the length of time that it might take for a good project that we want to see in the community to get through the system, because it's a different body, a different meeting date, a different plan set that they have to submit, a different review fee that they have to provide, versus the planning commission, who would be responsible for reviewing the development project in the first place, give them, or the council in your case, ultimately. It keeps it in the same kind of flow chart, same process, without having to divert them to a different entity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Councilwoman? Any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing seen none? Motion passes.
New business, item two, approval of request from Westland Goodfellows for a special one-day liquor license to serve alcohol at the Eloise Asylum Mojo in the Morning Halloween Party event at their location, three zero seven one two Michigan Avenue, on October twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, from eight P M. to midnight.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Baumann, is there support?
Not supported.
Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I don't think so.
Is there any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Would the petitioner like to come up? John, yep, yep, Mr. Hamburg? Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Good evening.
Well, I just, I wanted to add that I have some exciting news. I don't know if, if you guys heard the Free Press, but Westland was featured on the front page of the Metro section this weekend. We got a great story, so we're, we're in the Free Press, and I just wanted to thank you for the exciting partnership and the support that you guys give us in able to do this, right? Because without you, there is no us. So I just wanted to say thank you, I brought extra copies, I'll set them here, if anybody would like a copy, you're more than welcome to it. But yeah, we're super excited to have Mojo in the morning, Friday, October twenty-fifth, at, at the asylum, with a hundred and fifty of his special invited guests. We've pretty much owned that morning show all month, so it's been a really, really great opportunity for us and, and the city, so.
Any questions for Ron from the council?
I did have one. Can you just speak to the new, the newly formed partnership with the Westland Goodfellows and how this event is going to be, you know, ultimately benefiting the Goodfellows?
So we, we are excited to participate in the sponsorship of the children for No Kid Without a Christmas, so that's going to contribute to that, and we are going to get a lot more involved with the Goodfellows, so.
Wonderful. Any dis-
It's, it's just, it's a new thing, and we're excited.
Okay.
We know they do a lot of great things for the community, so we're excited to be part of them, so.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. Any additional discussion from the council? And I know that you're going to abstain, so we will have a roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart is absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ravakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Portem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamburg.
And we got bumped out of USA Today, we were supposed to be in there, but we got bumped, so.
Oh, jeez.
That was bumming. Have a great night.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking for the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Public comment, is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's John Kelly, I'm one of your disabled citizens, I just want to say, and whatever hidden gem you have over at Wildwood Apartments, I feel very fortunate to have that as a living residence. You're doing a great job. As I, I gave it a lot of thought and prayer about what to say today, but I had some friends come over and see my apartment, and for what I have to pay for it, I feel very fortunate that you guys have it in, in the city limits, and they, when they looked at my apartment, they said, well, for the price that you pay, I feel that they, they were just so floored that what I have is what I have. I very, feel very much appreciative that you have Wildwood Apartments within your city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir, Mr. Pruitt.
So a couple of things, again, Edward Pruitt here. Yeah, I heard everything, you know, a lot of things on the radio, booze and baddies is I think a heavy part that's coming to the Eloise, that's what it's called, booze and baddies. First thing through the chair, to Director Mo, I thank him for taking the time to answer those questions. It brought confirmation to what I was thinking, but also clarity and some functionality. Overall, the zoning ordinance, it's been needing to be updated, it's very antiquated, and I believe- and I believe wholly, with some issues still, but wholly, the zoning transition is a good thing for the city. Number two, through the chair, to Fire Chief Stamper, yeah, I called, I just want to tell you that your EMS crews and firemen, they are amazing, they're so full of heart and care. Every time I see them out, whether they know I'm seeing them or not, you can just see their heart and compassion, I just wanted to share that with you. Through the chair, to Kyle Dolly, Chief Kyle Dolly, I just, one thing, we've had a conversation months ago, you said, you'll tell me if I'm doing something bad, and that's the truth, but I don't have anything bad to say, I see that you are doing an impeccable job, there's a road ahead, but I see a lot of good transition, it's shaping up the city as it needs to, keeping people safe and protected. Thank you for the PSAs, do more, the PSA today with the school bus, please do more, that was fantastic, so I wanted to share that feedback as well. Through the chair, actually, not really through the chair, but through the chair to Council President McDermott and Councilwoman Bowman, thank you for your questions, those added to the clarity, especially for, even for me, but for members of the public to really understand what this process is. Lastly, one of the great things that I love about the city council is members of the public is able to come up and express issues with situations that they're having in their neighborhood, there's usually a resolution that comes from it, oh, it may be issues with neighbors, maybe issues with other situations, and while it may not be able to be answered right here and there, there's usually a success moment that occurs. I just want to let everybody know that I think it's so important that we recognize that in our city, there are people made up of it, and what I have found many times, and it's very concerning, is that there are stalkers in our city, and I've been a victim of that stalking. One of the issue, well, three times this year, from Council Stampy's household and Council Stampy. Please fix it, please.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone on my left? Public comment? Yeah, okay. Anyone on my right? Ready, Ray? Okay.
I'm ready, my boys got to save the best. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor, and for this big piece of the Lunch and Learn, I hope you'll see it on the video when it comes out, because it was really good, because there's been a lot of takeaways from it, I got a lot of nice compliments. First of all, I wanted to thank the Westland Police Department for supporting me, and coming out and learning about the, more about us, and that was a pretty good, it was a really pretty good turnout, and I hopefully have more of these next year, because DEI was talking about it with me. So hopefully, on the Mental Health Day, and I think it's important to have this conversation, because we don't want to see it fall through the cracks, and that's where some problems maybe can happen, where the person might end up in the hospital or something, sometimes we can avoid that, because with that, what they call that 988 number, we brought that up, and it's important, and here are people, you don't know what people's been through till you hear their story. Like, in my time, I didn't have diversity, I did not have inclusion, but for me to get all this, just keep going out there and knocking on the doors into our agency, hey, we have the right to be in the community, we have the right to be, you know, treated with dignity and respect, and this button here is number one, and I'm telling you, people have been asking me about that button. And I want to read off a couple of things, because I know the Times does pretty quick. I also want to thank CLS as my family, families and friends, I've been there 12 years or more, I've been there 12 years with that peer mentoring, and I want to read off something on this clip here, what she said, and sent it all to my coworkers there. It says, "For these of you who knows Ray is an advocate, not surprising with Ray at CLS, he's an employee, he's a peer mentor, he's a Westland Disability Acquiesce Chairperson, Westland DEL he's involved with, and CLS's DEL, I'm on that one too now, DEL, diversity and inclusion. Also for being ambassador of the Mental Health Awareness Community Living Services of CLS," and I even got a nice email from somebody from CLS, said, "Ray, I am proud of you, I am very proud of you being a leader of the mental health," and good conversations, it was really good conversations happening, I got to talk to my story, there's other, too, I want to thank them, I want to thank the moderator, it was great. So, and I also want to thank Kevin for this one, and I want to read off on this one, Ray Sheholtz, Mayor of Kevin, who's this under the world at the Mental Health Day, lunchtime conversations.
Ray, your time is up, I'm so sorry to have to stop you.
Time, all right.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Ray.
Time flies.
Make sure to bring it next time to read it to us, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Lori Wilson, Richard, you stated you've sent out over 17,000 absentee ballots.
Yes.
And you've only gotten, received maybe half of them back?
Yes.
I implore the city and the citizens of Westland, no matter who you vote for, exercise your right to vote, don't let these ballots sit on a table, or in your mailbox, or in your car sun visors like mine did one year to the very last day. Don't let that happen. This is a very, very, and they say this about every election, that this is a pivotal moment in history, this is. Go out and vote.
Thanks, former Chairwoman Wilson.
Public comment, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment. Mr. Warren, did you want, did you have something?
No.
Okay, we will close. Public comment is closed, we'll move on to comments from the administration. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President, thank you, City Council residents, and all those in attendance tonight, I hope you all had a good weekend, and hope your, hopefully your Monday has been a good start to your week. Just a few quick reminders for residents, first, our new bulk pickup program, a letter was sent out to residents explaining the rules and how that's going to work, it's kind of going back to the old way, where you can put your bulk items out on the curb, it's biweekly, so it's the week of your recycling, so just want to remind folks, put it out with your recycling, you can get a list of which items are, that will be accepted on the city website, cityofwestland.com. Also, a change with the yard waste pickup, we're not, we're not going to be raking the leaves onto the curb, onto the street anymore, leaves can be mulched or bagged for pickup, and that's also kind of going back to how it was before last year. The city is going to be providing free yard waste bags to homeowners, you can pick them up right here at City Hall during normal business hours, nine to five, Monday through Friday. Also, we have a Halloween decorating contest coming up, it's kicked off officially, and it'll run until midnight on October 31st. Residents are invited to show off their creativity by nominating themselves, or any Westland residents, for a chance to win in one or more of the following categories, best autumn display, best spooky display, or most over-the-top display. And that's always something fun that we share, that'll be on Monday, November 18th, at the Westland City Council meeting. So in order to enter for that contest, you're going to go to cityofwestland.com, you're going to include a photo of the decorated home, or your decorated home, and you can put that nomination in on the city website, you'll see that on there. Those who don't win will still receive a certificate of participation, which will be mailed out to them. DTE will be hosting a community engagement open house coming up at the Westland Friendship Center at 1119 Newburgh Road on Tuesday, October 22nd, so that's tomorrow, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And this is a great opportunity for residents to engage directly with DTE representatives, to ask questions personally, to share your experiences. Historically, we've had a lot of challenges in the city with power outages, we've seen them invest quite a bit of money and time into updating the infrastructure here, does seem as though a lot of the areas of the city are getting better, and that's, from that standpoint. We're going to continue to work with DTE to make sure that they're aware of the issues that residents are having, and I'll actually say residents and businesses, because it's an issue for both, but we're going to work together to ensure our communities' needs are met, and your feedback, whether it be contacting City Council, the administration, or by attending events like this open house, are very valuable to us. I'd also like to invite everyone, especially the kids, to our Trunk or Treat, the City of Westland Trunk or Treat is coming up this Wednesday, October 23rd, at the 18th District Court parking lot, which is located at 36675 Ford Road, police station's also right there too, if you're looking for it. The event runs from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., kids 12 and under are invited to dress up in their favorite costume and enjoy trick-or-treating from creatively decorated car trunks, and I'll be there as well, I know some of our council members will be there, we got thousands of pieces of candy ready to go, so hope you make it out, it should be a lot of fun for everybody. And then, just the last reminder I have is CSX Railroad has contacted us, the railroad tracks on Cherry Hill west of Newburgh will be closed beginning November 4th for rail and surface upgrading. That closure is tentatively scheduled for one week. And then, just to close this off, I just want to thank everybody who attended our Fire Station Number Two groundbreaking, it was a really exciting moment for the city, it's going to be a great training center, really state-of-the-art, that was funded by a state grant, State of Michigan supported us on that, and then also, I want to congratulate the Fire Department on the success of their fire prevention lunch that was held Saturday last week, I was able to stop by, I looked like everybody was having a great time, and that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the City Attorney's Office?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thanks, City Attorney Fason, we will now begin with the council comments, led by Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to kind of share, you know, a follow-up to last week's statements about bullying, so that's why I'm wearing orange today, orange is an anti-bullying awareness color, and as part of the educational community, I think it's very important that our children know that we stand with them. So why orange, orange is the color of autumn, it, orange is related to the colors of being safe and visible, instead of safety yellow, and it's also a warm and inviting color, so when children see you wearing orange in October, you know, maybe you're just celebrating Halloween or the festivities there around, but a lot of children are aware of orange being the color of anti-bullying movement. And though people always say bullying builds character, or kids need a thick skin, time and time again, we've proven that to be a very false statement, and especially in the day and age where children no longer just go home to their family, the phone doesn't ring, they are inundated with access to so many sources of media, where they're just not left alone, and, you know, they, they get no reprieve from, from their bullies. And, you know, it's to the point where these children, who also have access to other information, are taking their lives, and it's very important that we wrap our arms around these children, you know, yes, they, you know, I think the fact that people say that, you know, it builds character is categorically false, because I can look around and see a lot of adults that have been bullied, and are continuing to bully other people, and it just shows that they're not as strong as they could be. So, you know, if we can do anything as a community, I would encourage us all to be kind to one another, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, you're certainly entitled to your freedom of speech, but I don't think that you should be entitled to go around spewing hatred and demise of people's characters. So one of the things that we teach our children, in public school at least, is that you should think, and that being an acronym, T, is it true, H, is it helpful, I, is it inspiring, N, is it necessary, and K, is it kind? So if the comment that you're going to make isn't one of those things, it's probably not worth making, and if the comment you're going to make cannot be changed by the person receiving your message in 30 seconds or less, it's not worth making. Reserve your judgment for yourself, love yourself as well, but when we expect people to change who they are, and, you know, based on socioeconomics, the color of their hair, the color of their skin, the types of shoes they wear, you can't change that in 30 seconds, it's unrealistic, and it's unkind, so.
Numbers are warned. Millions recovered for clients.
And so, I go by the 30-second rule, and the crinkled heart rule, once you say it, you can't take it back, once it's on the internet, it doesn't go away, and that goes for adults as well. So please be a model for our children, and be kind to one another, and if you really have a grievance with someone, take it up privately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, we will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
A couple of things, just a reminder, Relay for Life is November 12th here at City Hall, 6 to 8 p.m., I know I'll be here, I will never miss an opportunity for pizza, also, good events, too. One last thing, get out to vote, 65% of people voted at last federal election for president, we'll try to get that higher, especially the younger crowd, I know my group of age majority is only less than 50% voting, so please get out there to vote, please, and that is all I got.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, we will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I just, over last weekend, there were a lot of things going on, there's a lot of things going on this whole month, I think we heard all the different activities going on, and I just want to recognize that the Westland Historical Society had a great event on Saturday, it was a lot of fun, I did get to participate as a character, so I have not put the video on my social media at this point yet, but I might, but it was, it was a lot of fun, and it was really great to see the amount of people coming out with such, it was done, it was done so well, so I just want to recognize Derek and Sharon, and the others from the Historical Society who put that on, and thank you, I'm looking forward to more of those events at that, because that's, again, it's another gem in our city, that's right there. So many people came, and they're like, I've never been here, I've driven by this all the time, I didn't know this was here, I didn't, you know, or even if they've been there, they haven't been in all the houses, and so it was a really great opportunity to showcase that little bit, and I'm very familiar, not only do we have the Henry Ford Museum, but I come from upstate New York, where we have another one called Genesee Country Museum, and they do the reenactments all the time, so they'll always have people in character doing the, you know, blacksmiths and different things, so it's a really neat gem to have in our own little city, so I just want to encourage people, if you have not been to the Westland Historical Village, then please do go there, I think, I think they're open Saturdays, 11 to 4, if I'm right, 1 to 4, sorry, 1 to 4, on Saturdays, and it's free. Also, I did get to stop by the Norway Harvest Fest, and that's always been a fun event, and I heard that they just, it was just amazing, I heard such good things about it when I was, when I was there, so, and then the other thing I want to mention is, at the Westland Center for the Arts, Inspire Theater is showing their Noises Off, and I'm really excited, I don't know about the tickets, I've heard there are still some tickets available for the coming weekends, or I definitely heard that if you want to volunteer and work at the theater, that you actually can see the show as well, so there are some opportunities to volunteer for that, for that, and if you haven't seen, I actually caught the movie Noises Off with Carol Burnett, it's actually really, really funny, so you, you know, you got to come see it, it's a, it's a play about a play, so it's actually really good. And then I will reiterate, as others have, about voting, yes, this is a very, it's, it's such an amazing thing that we get to do in this country, that we actually really do get to exercise a free vote, and I do encourage people to exercise that, because I definitely am in agreement that if you, if you vote in your name, then you have, you are doing your, one part of your civic duty, and it's so critical, so just please, there's so many different options and ways to vote this year, so please take advantage of that. And with that, I think I am, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, we will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
All right, thank you. I'm going to jump on a bandwagon, I'm glad you brought up the bullying thing, because I was going to bring that up last week, but I forgot, but Cy- But cyberbullying is an issue as well. It's another form. And I've been working with a couple of government officials and they have a nice website for you to report cyberbullying. It's called Stop Bullying, B-U-L-L-Y-I-N-G.gov. And that's where you can report cyberbullying and get more educated about bullying and how to identify it. Next thing, I want to jump on a bandwagon. Oh, no one brought this up. So I'm going to make sure I get this right. Not yet. Ruby D. Richardson. I want to congratulate you on your nomination or being recognized by the NAACP yesterday for all your great work. So I want to make sure you got recognized and congratulations on that. Also, I want to report back to City Council on the parks. This year, I was able to participate at some of the new pickleball courts we have. And I want to encourage people in Westland to come out and play at these parks. They're really great. Pickleball is bringing a lot of people, but it's bringing a lot of people from outside the city. It would be great for the things that we build, that the people in the city get to enjoy them as well. So, but pickleball this year, every court I went to was packed every single time I went out there. So if you haven't played it or curious about it, I encourage you to go out there and play it next summer. And I hear rumors that there might be a summer, a fall or winter league at Jefferson Barnes, maybe? So keep your ears out for that. I know the mayor brought up the Halloween trunk or treat Wednesday, but I know you're going to have an amazing time there and you might be, want to go to more. So if you go to my Facebook page, I have a list of all the trunk or treats in the area where you can have, they're free. Great time to make moments with your little ones. So go to my Facebook page, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, to get a list of all the trunk or treats around the city for you to enjoy a moment with your kids. And you already brought Pizza Palooza. Don't forget to go to that. That's definitely one of the favorites. Also, planning ahead, they have the, is it the Taste Festival coming up in December 3rd? So make sure you get your tickets early now because they do go pretty fast. Other than that, I'll see you in, what, two weeks? Three?
Two.
Two.
Oh, it's two.
Two.
He's got it down because he knows...
I'm sorry. I'll see you in two days at trunk or treat and everybody, make sure you do get out and vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Protem.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up today. We have a little bit larger crowd, so it's good to see some new faces in the audience. Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski, for bringing that up. I often am a target of cyberbullying and it's not nice. So I encourage anyone that has issues with any of us, any elected official or anyone, just to reach out. I think all of us are pretty accessible and willing to discuss. So I think sometimes individuals feel like they can just hide behind their computer, but I think that being kind and understanding differences is really important. So everyone has a different way of life. Everyone has a different way of thinking and thoughts, but I think all of us are working for a common good. So thank you for bringing that up. I think it's really important that we teach our children well and just be kind. I say that after every meeting, is just be kind with one another and, you know, try to make someone's day and smile and understand their point of view. I also wanted to wish my husband happy anniversary. We're celebrating 18 years of marriage today and we've been together for a long time, but today's our anniversary, so I wanted to say happy anniversary to my husband. And I am wearing pink, so I talked about this last meeting, but just wanted to show support for those that are going through the fight of breast cancer. Maybe you're a survivor supporter, but I will be getting my mammogram this week on Wednesday. It's never fun. I know the ladies probably understand what we're talking about, but again, early prevention is the key. Thank you, my colleagues, for, I know John Hambrick from Eloise came up, but thank you for supporting their party. John and I had spoke about supporting the Westland Goodfellows. We are off to a fantastic start. So we have right now the City of Westland, my colleagues, the mayor, everyone really at the city has been amazing. So thank you so much, Mayor, for encouraging those that work with us. This is super near and dear to my heart. I think you guys probably heard me talk about this. The Goodfellows organization was going to go belly up and lack of just support and volunteers. I don't have time to be stalking or visiting anyone. I've been busy with this and busy with businesses and such, but this is very, very, very near and dear to my heart. And it's going to help a lot of families and a lot of children that would not have a Christmas, so I stepped into that role. We already have two sponsors coming in at the $10,000 sponsorship, which is fantastic. Izaki came in with a $5,000. Hennessy Engineering, $1,000. Plant Moran, $500. I know there's a couple others that are coming in. I just spoke with PBM Tree and they are going to be sponsoring as well. WLND has been just amazing with trying to get the word out. So applications are available at Jefferson Barnes. And then Devon Adams and Alex Garza are reaching out to small businesses. So if you yourself would like to adopt a family, maybe with a friend or maybe you want to take it to your work, please let me know. We're going to have wish lists that come in from the families and we're going to give it to you. You can do the shopping if you wish, which is actually the fun part. You coordinate delivery with the family and we're going to throw in a food voucher so they can get food around the holidays, too. So it's really rewarding. And if you are interested, please, please, please let me know. We also have a wish list on our website, so westlandgoodfellows.org. You can go there. If you just want to buy a couple toys, that's okay, too. We'll take them. We'll take anything we can to support the families. So I'll be talking about it more, but I just wanted to put the plug out there and thank you, everyone, that has been supportive so far. Really, I know these families appreciate it, especially around the holidays. Ray, congratulations on your event. I know you got cut off, but the mayor gave you a nice award. I know, I know. You had only a small amount of time, but you had a great event on October 10th, so congratulations and thank you for that. I wanted to congratulate the Norway Citizens Council. 700 people, I think I heard. I don't know if it was right, but wow, 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 wow. Ran out of pumpkins, ran out of tickets. You guys did an amazing job. This was, it blew me away. It was fantastic. So congratulations. I was there with my grandson and my nieces and it was awesome. The weather, it couldn't have been better either. The weather was unbelievable. And then afterwards, we headed over to the Westland Historic Village. So congratulations Sharon and Derek and everyone that put that event together. That was, it was a really great time. Derek's an amazing storyteller, too. His characters, it was awesome. It was a great time. Again, the weather was great. And my husband said, "Melissa, I need a power wash and get new siding over at the Westland Historic Village." He was already like thinking of things to do. And I said, "All right, Brian, let's go through ARPA." But I know that there's some upgrades, too, that we're hoping that we can get done over at the park. And then I know that the mayor talked about DTE events tomorrow, so I look forward to seeing everyone. I'll be at the trunk or treat. I have a special guest that's going to come with me on the 23rd. It's T-Rex! So we're going to be passing out candy. So I'm excited about that. I'm going to have my son with me. Kind of forced him to come, but he'll be there, too. And then lastly, I wanted to give an update. I talked about the Living and Learning Enrichment Center and things are going amazing. So there's going to be probably more updates in the future, but this one is just a small update. So they are working here at City Hall Tuesdays and Fridays from 1 to 3. They've been working in the council chambers. They've been wiping down chairs probably that you're sitting in, cleaning hard surfaces and just really enjoying and brightening up the spirit here. I don't know. Mayor, you have to let me know, like if it's going good. But I keep on asking Stephanie, like, "Hey, how's it going?" Something new that is going to be started out is at the Friendship Center. They are going to be reopening their greenhouse. So they are going to involve the team. It's going to be a great project. My mom, who actually did the greenhouse at the Western Wayne Skill Center, is helping Beth with Mary Underwood, who is at the Senior Friendship Center as well. And they're going to be having a really, really, really great team of people that are interested in like planting and watering. So I can't wait to share more about that. It's going to be great. And then lastly, I wanted to also, I had this on my list, I know you mentioned it first. Congratulations, Ruby, on your NAACP award. I was supposed to be there yesterday, but I ended up in the ER with my husband. So he's fine. He had a procedure today, but everything's good. But congratulations. I know you do a lot for the community. Well-deserved, well-deserved award. So I will see everyone in two weeks on November 4th. Turn those ballots in. Thank you, Ms. Wilson, for the reminder because we don't want to hold on to them and we want to get them out as soon as possible. So everyone be safe and kind with each other. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, Protem. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. I'll just quickly reiterate some of it. Ms. Richards, congratulations on your exceptional service award at the Western Wayne County NAACP. Well-deserved. If you don't have the chance to see what Ruby does for the Western Wayne Branch of the NAACP, it's just about everything. She wears a lot of different hats. She kind of functions as the communications person, the secretary, the event planner. So a very well-deserved honor last night. I was glad to see Westland's own Ruby Richards be recognized for all her tireless work, advocacy and dedication by the Western Wayne Branch of the NAACP. A job very well done by Derek, Sharon, Christina, Councilwoman Bowman, and the wonderful inaugural not-so-scary storytime event. We had ghosts, we had pirates, we had arguing ghosts who kind of couldn't figure out whose house the octagon house belonged to. But it was a really great event and well-attended for an inaugural event. So thank you all for putting that event on and looking to help you make it bigger and better next year. But great job, job well done. I want to give a shout out to the Norway Community Citizens Council, to Christina, to Joanne, to Annette and everybody on the Citizens Council for another wonderful Fall Harvest Festival. I had the opportunity to volunteer and participate on the event, doing the sign-in and check-in. So thank you for allowing me to partake in that event and thank you to the Citizens Council for doing it. And to the mayor, the deputy mayor, my colleagues who I saw out there, thanks for stepping by too and supporting the Norway community over there at Jefferson Barnes. They, I know they really appreciate it and it was another fantastic and terrific event. As was mentioned, tomorrow is the opportunity to come and go to the open house with DTE. I do want to precaution people, it's not going to be like a town hall-style Q and A. It's probably going to be more like they'll have vendor booths and things set up all around the Friendship Center, but I would still recommend to come, to ask your questions, to give DTE a piece of your mind on their lousy and expensive service on why we constantly have power outages here in Westland, why they constantly go to the Michigan Public Service Commission demanding rate hikes when we see sometimes little investment and face constant interruption in our power. So I still would encourage residents to go there and get in-demand answers from DTE. I know many of us on your city council will be there asking questions as well because it's really wholly unacceptable when they turn around time and again and ask for rate increases from the Michigan Public Service Commission. And then they saddle us with constant outages and lousy $35 bill credits when we're throwing out hundreds of dollars worth of food in our fridge every time the power goes out or having to stay at a hotel for the cost of 125 bucks a night. So I would encourage everybody to go and be polite, but give DTE a stern talking and a piece of your mind. Ray, congratulations on your event. You're always an asset to the community and we, job well done for you, too. And we always appreciate everything that you have and offer in the community. Wanted to thank the members of the Westland community who did go out to the Western Wayne County NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner. It's always great to be, you know, well-represented. I think Westland had almost three tables worth of people. We had members of the community. We had our DEI department. We had our Westland Police Department who always make an effort to show up there. And in fact, I believe they're one of the only departments and they had a table full of officers. Our community police officers were there. So thank you, Chief Dolly. Thank you to the PD for, you know, showing up. And I want to give them some props, too, because they don't just show up once a year to the Freedom Fund Dinner. I have the opportunity to go to some of the meetings throughout the year for the Western Wayne County NAACP. And I know the PD always makes an effort to show up year-round and be engaged and listen, so I appreciate that as well. And then want to thank the fire department for their fire prevention event that I had the chance to go to. The luncheon that they put on a couple of Saturdays ago is kind of an annual luncheon that they do for fire prevention and awareness. So Chief, great job to you and all the guys in the union over there and really appreciate making the community safer and aware of fire prevention. So appreciate the luncheon, appreciate what you guys do. Last but not least, I wanted to talk about the election. We all know that everybody in this room and many of you watching at home are engaged enough to know that we have a very important election coming up. And some of you may have already turned in your ballot. I want to give you some dates. 1789 was the first time that people in America were allowed to vote. But I say 1789 with an asterisk next to it because in 1789, you had to be a white, land-owning male to vote. In 1828, it was the first time that a majority of states in this union allowed for non-white land-owning men to have the right to vote. In 1865, the 13th Amendment was ratified and it expanded the right to vote to black men in this country. But it didn't truly grant them the right to vote because it did not outlaw poll tests and taxes. It did not outlaw literacy tests, fees and fines and impediments that were put up for black men to have the right to vote. It did not outlaw violence and segregation that were used to prevent and intimidate black men from voting. And there were activists like Frederick Douglass, William G. Allen, William J., John Brown, Harriet Beecher Stowe, Sojourner Truth, who fought not only as abolitionists to slavery, but fought for the right to vote. And while the 13th Amendment was ratified in 1865, the right to vote was not granted to black people. It was certainly not granted to women. That did not come until the 19th Amendment was passed and ratified in 1920. Through the work of people like Susan B. Anthony, Elizabeth Cady, Lucy Burns, Alice Paul, suffragettes who fought to give people the right to vote, people who sit on this very council, people in our audience in this community, throughout a majority of the history of this country, were not granted the right to vote. And even through the passage of the 19th Amendment, it still largely excluded the right of black women and women of color, black and brown women, native and indigenous women, that right to vote, newly immigrated women. It wasn't until the struggle of Dr. Martin Luther King and the civil rights movement of the 1960s, people like Dr. King and Medgar Evers, who fought and pushed President Lyndon Baines Johnson to pass and ratify the Voting Rights Act of 1965, to break down those barriers and impediments to voting, to put a stop to the violence and the intimidation and the poll tests and the taxes and the literacy tests that people had. I think of a quote from Frederick Douglass, who said in 1865, when he was speaking at a Massachusetts Anti-Slavery Society, where he said, "Again, I want the elective franchise for one as a colored man because ours is a peculiar government based upon a peculiar idea, and that idea is universal suffrage. And we live in a country that's done a lot of wrong in our history." And the beautiful thing about democracy and the beautiful thing about our right to vote is we get to right those wrongs. We get to use the Voting Rights Act of 1865. We get to use the 19th Amendment as a way to say, "We're sorry. And we know that we have a lot more work to do." But when we talk about, when I sit up here and I talk about, democracy is not a spectator sport. It requires your active participation. It requires your participation not just on Election Day on November 5th. It requires it every day. Because if we weren't engaged every day, the work and the struggle that Dr. King and Medgar Evers and Malcolm X and people, sorry. And people, I'm sorry. People in the 1960s did to get the Voting Rights Act... the 1960s did to get the Voting Rights Act passed, the work of Lucy Burns and Alice Paul and Susan B. Anthony and suffragettes in the 19-teens and 20s to get women the right to vote through the 19th Amendment, the work of people like Frederick Douglass and Harriet Beecher Stowe and John Brown in the 1860s, who not only abolished slavery, but even have some semblance of freedom and voting rights for black and brown men and native and indigenous men in this country, would not have been achieved. So please don't take that right to vote for granted. Please don't sit on the sidelines and say it makes no difference. Because if Lyndon Mains Johnson wasn't in that White House to sign that Voting Rights Act, if we didn't have our very constitution to grant amendments that would expand voting rights, we would be still sitting here, the country that we were in 1789, with a very restrictive, very illiberal democracy. So get your friends, get your family, get your neighbors, get everyone you know, and bug them to vote. Whoever you're going to vote for, get out there and tell them to exercise their right to vote, because democracy is not a spectator sport. It does require your active participation. And when you're frustrated with something, and when you're mad at a particular politician or mad about a particular decision, or you see an injustice that needs to be written, a wrong that needs to be made right, at that ballot box is where we can do that. That organizing, that protest, that work that goes ahead of the election, and then when you cast that vote. So please, for all the people that could not vote before you and struggled and fought like hell to get that right, please go out and vote. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, support.[1781.33]